All right. It is seven o'clock and I will call this meeting to order and we will start with a roll call. Janet, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Chupiano here. Councilmember Tillman.
She's here, but she's on mute.
I'm here. I'm unmuted, but do I need to let you all know that I had a physical or family emergency and that is why I'm on Zoom?
Shall I finish the appropriate time?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Clovin?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Diaz? Mayor Wan?
I am here and I've been informed as a way to facilitate the meeting with Councilmember Tillman. Malo, if you would inform us as the procedure here.
Thank you, Mayor Wan. This is brand new under AB 2449 and as you heard from Councilmember Tillman, she does have an emergency circumstance which under the new law allows her to participate remotely if the council so votes and the emergency circumstance is a physical or family medical emergency. So if the council can, should you so desire, vote to allow Councilmember Tillman to participate remotely, she can continue to participate.
So I guess I will call the vote. I vote yes.
Councilmember Chupiano?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clovin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz? Mayor Wan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. That order of business is taken care of. We will move to the pleasure of allegiance.
My pleasure allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. If there's anyone in the room or on Zoom that has a comment that is not for an item that's not on the agenda, now is your time. Mr. Moita, feel free. You're standing already. Please push the green button and you will have three minutes.
That should take no longer than that. Hello, Mayor Wan, members of the city council. Last week I had an engagement I had to go to and I was late coming here and I'm sorry to waste your time, so I wanted to make my public comment tonight. And this is in relation to the housing element that you're working on. And I-
Mr. Moita, I believe that's on the agenda.
This is dedicated for non-agenda items. So if you have something that is not on our agenda, this is the time. If you want to speak on an item that is on our agenda later, then we will take public comment again for each item that is on the agenda. Okay? Okay. Let's give it a go. And if you want to hit the button, I think it's... I think we're going to have to reset your time. Nope. No, the audio recording won't actually pick it up. You pushed that one? This is one moment. We have technical difficulties. Do we have the mic available? Give us a moment. Hello? So...
Testing, testing? Testing? Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much.
So what Malo was saying is if you make a comment here that is about the housing element, then that is not, this would not be the time for that.
So it'd be later?
Yeah, that would be later.
Oh, okay.
All right, false start. Is there anyone else in the audience that has a comment on non-agenda items? Now would be your time. Janet, is there anyone online that has a comment?
Mayor Wan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Excellent. I will move then to the consent calendar. Does anyone have any item they'd like to pull from the calendar?
I do, Mayor.
Okay. Please, what item is it?
It is 4G.
All right. Okay. Got that. Okay. Any other items? Maybe we could, if we want to discuss item 4G now, that would be fine. Was there a question that you had, Councilmember Tillman?
Yes, I was, yes, please. I was wondering if the mayor would entertain a slight change and that is offering the spot for Councilmember Clovin to serve on that committee with you, that ad hoc committee. I noticed that when we approved all of the council committees earlier this month, or last month actually, that he has a lot of committees that he is no longer a part of, except for Transpac where he's now going to be the chair for our region. And so I'm wondering if he would entertain actually serving on that with him.
Okay. Yeah, I, this committee, this ad hoc committee stems from a meeting that I had with ClimatTech, the company that we had engaged with to do the energy assessment and then later potentially do energy-related projects. During the meeting, it became apparent that it would be useful to have an ad hoc committee. And so I had asked if Councilmember Tillman would, or sorry, Councilmember Chupiano would be willing to serve with me as well. I imagine that this engagement would be short-term in nature. We're scheduled to likely receive information from ClimatTech back towards the end of February, I believe, is their optimistic timeframe. And so I thought it would be prudent to move quickly on that. So I still hold to that unless you had a comment that you'd like to make? I don't know what's going on with the mics.
Let's try that. Thank you, Councilmember Tillman. I'm familiar with ClimatTech. I spoke with them at length during the Cal Cities Conference at Long Beach. I was excited about bringing them on board. They are a component of a potential future climate action plan because they have done such work for the city of San Leandro and down in Rancho Cucamonga. I was just, given the opportunity, it'd be great to work with them and I know the work they do is good. That's, so I would accept that if that were something that you would be entertained, but I understand.
Yeah, I don't know if you had a comment as well. I think, you know, and we've worked together on several other areas and I think that that's gone really well. And in talking with the folks at ClimatTech, I think it would move very quickly. So it's, I'm comfortable with the selection. I made it, so I would stick to that unless you had another feeling.
And I'm comfortable with the selection as well to serve on that committee, so I guess that's my only comment.
Okay. All right, then we can do two votes if you want, or we can vote on them all together if we pulled one item. I think I will then-
It doesn't sound like the item 4G is going to change at this point, so let's go ahead and vote on the full consent calendar.
Okay.
Right.
So I would entertain a motion for the consent-
I move that we approve the consent calendar. It was written.
I second that.
Janet, would you call the vote, please? Oh, yes. Public comment. Here we will take public comment on the consent calendar. If there's anyone that would like to make a comment, now is your time. Do we see anyone online that has a comment?
Mayor Wan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Okay, I will close public comment and ask Janet if you would take the call of the vote. Yes, Councilmember Chupiano, second.
Councilmember Chupiano?
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye. And there's a delay, by the way.
Yeah, there's a delay in our audio, so we'll try and keep that in mind.
Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yep.
Mayor Wan?
Aye. All right, and we will move. We will now move to recognitions and presentations. Tonight, we will be doing our Do the Right Thing program. And I would ask that if there are members from any of the schools that are present, if you could raise your hands, if you are in chat, that will help us identify you when we call, when we promote you to speak. And as part of this, I would ask, I would turn it over to Councilmember Clovin, as he's a member of this committee, if you would take over this portion.
Thank you, Mayor Wan. And I wanted to put a shout out to our former mayor and councilmember Carl Wolf, who did this so well for the last two years. He always brought a certain levity, a certain, I'll say, a childlike humor to it that I really appreciated. I'll try to do it justice. At this time, do we have either Principal Sanchez or Principal Fong in the room? One of them raised their hands. And Janet, will you call on, let's say, start off with Principal Sanchez? Or Ms. Fong, whoever, who's ever there. There he is.
I get to go first.
You get to go first. She called dibs. Excellent, please. Can you tell us-
We're younger.
Can you tell us who your recipients are today?
What was that?
You're welcome.
Thank you for having us. I actually do have our two teachers on. I know that Matthew is in the waiting room still. He is one of our students that Ms. Cheska is going to be speaking to. And I am not sure if Liam is also in the waiting room still.
Excellent. Would you like to talk about one of your students first and have them come on? Which one would you like to do?
I see Matthew is signing on right now. Noel, would you mind, Ms. Cheska, would you mind talking about Matthew?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. I'm Noel Cheska. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Mount Diablo Elementary. And Matthew is, there he is, Matthew is my student and he exemplifies the character trait this month, which is kindness. Matthew is the student in the classroom that everyone can work with. He welcomes anyone in that looks to be alone. He is equally welcoming on the playground. He has a little core group of buddies, but I've seen him walk the track with other students that seem to need a friend. So he's always out there with somebody, giving a smile. When I walk in the room in the morning, he is the student that's ready to help. He's ready to welcome me in and say hello. He has a great sense of humor, so always has a joke to tell you. So I truly feel like he is a student that really exemplifies kindness. And I'm so proud that he's in my class. So congratulations, Matthew.
Absolutely, Matthew. Congratulations. That is a wonderful accolade that your teacher just gave you. What do you think of that?
Um, I mean, I'm pretty proud because I would never think that I would be still the month.
You should be proud of it.
Yeah, and I mean, I always like to be kind with my other classmates because, like, I always welcome everyone as a friend and even if I don't know them, I would get to know them. Well, so, yeah.
Thank you so much, Matthew. Congratulations. You sound like you deserve. That's wonderful. Excellent. How about the next student?
Yes, next. I don't see him on just yet, but Ms. Waco, if you would like to introduce and talk about Liam. I know that Liam is, Liam is so kind. He comes and says goodbye to the principal every single day. So that is my claim for Mr. Liam. Oh, I see Dad, I think, is hopping on right now.
Fantastic.
Yes. Greg, are you able to put your computer on, your camera on? Oh, and then where's my buddy Liam? Yay! So I don't know if you heard me say, but my big thing, I was so excited that Liam won because he comes and says hello and goodbye to the principal every day. And there's very few kids in any grade level that do that. So he is so kind to me and there's always a smile on his face. So Ms. Waco, would you mind taking it away for why you recommend-
Absolutely. I am very, very proud of Liam and I'm fortunate to have been Liam's teacher both in kindergarten and first grade. And Liam, for one thing, he is great at making and keeping friendships. Friendships mean a lot to him and he takes them very seriously and would go above and beyond for any friend in the classroom. He is also very well-spoken. He knows how to join a group politely, how to invite friends in politely, and how to include everyone. And of course, always with a smile and always making positive comments, making conversations with adults and other students alike throughout the school, as you said, Mrs. Sanchez. So I'm very excited that he was chosen for this award. And I do think that he is a fabulous example of kindness at our school. So congratulations, Liam.
Absolutely, Liam. You look like a happy guy and I love the smile on your face and that's great things your teacher's saying about you. Congratulations to both of you for getting the award for kindness. With that, we'll go to Principal Fong.
Good evening, council members. It's nice to see all of you. All right, so I am going to talk about Clarence Campasano and Chamaka Noadigo. They are both here, or at least I thought I, oh, yes, they are both here. So I'm going to talk about Chamaka first. I'm going to read off what her teacher said about her. And she said that Chamaka is always helpful and kind to her peers. She always makes a point to say thank you and to have a good day to me as she leaves. And her smile radiates in the classroom. She is an exceptional student. And that is Chamaka. Wave, Chamaka.
Congratulations.
All right. And our other representative is Clarence Campasano. Clarence is always the first to offer his help to his peers and his teacher. He thanks me daily before leaving class and has kind words for students when they seem down or frustrated. I can also say that, you know, he says hi to me and always says thank you, sir, at the end of the day. So I appreciate that as well.
Awesome. Thank you, Clarence and Chamaka. The trait of kindness is so important, especially nowadays. And to have your teachers appreciate you for that, we appreciate you too. And we have certificates here with your name on it and signed by the city council and we're looking forward to giving those to you. Thank you, teachers. The stuff we do for Do the Right Thing and acknowledging our students for these traits is so important and really appreciate you and your students for this month's trait, which is kindness. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
You betcha. And with that, we'll say goodbye to all of you and we'll look forward to seeing you later on. And we'll close the item.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, our report from the city manager and staff.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Thankfully, the microphones appear to be working not just one at a time at the moment, so that's a plus from where we started this evening. I do have a number of updates for you this evening. First, I want to start by talking about some of the storm impacts. As you may have noticed, we've had some storms and so our maintenance crews have been extremely busy, as have our vendors who assist us with tree removal, et cetera. We have had some trees down in town. We have had some mud collection in a couple of areas. One of the storm drain areas up near Windmill Canyon was cleared out last week in anticipation of bigger storms over this past weekend and then completely filled up again over the weekend in a matter of a day and a half or so. So their crews were back out today working on that as well as in the Peacock Creek area. So definitely a big thanks to all the public works maintenance crews who have been out doing all that work. And that's really been the focus for our maintenance staff as we've been going through this three-week of storms. Thankfully, now we have a little bit of a break, so hopefully we'll get to clean up a little and do a little bit more assessment on any longer-term issues that might have arisen. So that's the first thing. The second thing is your community financial sustainability committee. We are still seeking new members. We still have only the two members that were appointed by the council in December. I am meeting with those members later this week to provide them just an orientation to city financial materials so that they can get started doing their own research and spending time with it. But I'm hoping that we will see additional applications come soon so that we can seat a full committee and get that committee working. But that's what's coming up on that. On the financial fronts as well, the fiscal year '22 audit is being completed and it will go to, it is planned to go to the Budget and Noddy Committee on January 23rd and then back to the city council in February. So that is on track and that will set us up for a mid-year review after that. So we are making progress forward on those two financial items. On the, speaking on the finance front, our finance director candidate has completed all but one component of the background. We still have a couple of reference checks to hear. So hopefully at the next meeting or prior to that, your interim city manager will have that to announce. Or if it happens before February 3rd, I will announce it to you as well, because we are actually hoping to have that person start quite soon. On the other vacant position for which we have been recruiting, the office assistant slash code enforcement officer, all of that background has been completed and Jesse Rojas should be starting on January 23rd. So we are very excited about that. So the next time you're in City Hall after January 23rd, you will see a new person sitting at the front desk there. So please stop by, say hello and welcome Jesse to our family here in Clayton. And then finally, I just wanted to acknowledge that this is my last council meeting with you during my tenure. And I want to thank the Clayton staff, the Clayton council and the community for the support and engagement you've given me over the time that I've been here. It's bittersweet to leave. It's a very difficult decision, but I know you'll be in good hands once you approve the interim city manager agreement and move forward beyond that. But I did want to thank everybody for all your assistance over the last two years. So thank you.
I also want to thank you for your time here. You know, it wasn't as long as we had thought when you first came on. However, I think in the time that you've been here, it's been a rewarding experience, just having someone look at it fresh and come up with a lot of new ways to do things, formalizing things. It's been great working with you and I do wish you the best of luck. So thank you.
I just want to acknowledge your efforts over the last couple of years. And last year particularly, with all the things that we had to deal with and all the different hats you had to wear. You were not only managing, you were doing left, right, and center. If people really knew how much work you put in beyond just typical manager's effort. It was, I want to acknowledge you for that effort because it was phenomenal and you were truly appreciated as the city manager that you were. And I'm going to miss you.
Well, and Rain, I just want to thank you. It's been a short period of time, but you took me under your wing immediately and I've learned so much. And I know we only have a few more weeks, but I really want to thank you for your generosity of time and knowledge. I really appreciate it.
And thank you for the times you meet with me before the city council meetings and we get to go through everything in much deeper detail than we do here when we first get the materials. And you've always been on top of your game and I certainly appreciate that and wish you well on your future endeavors.
And then I will echo all of the above. I know that we came in together. I think your start date was a couple of weeks after we were sworn in. And to Kim's, to piggyback off of Kim and what she was saying, you definitely have taken all of us under your wing. And I know you did with me and helped shepherd us through the processes and how things work in city government. Your extensive knowledge and all of your contacts that you had actually really did bring us, bring us forward to where we needed to get to. And I know that we still have a lot more work to do, but I do think that a lot of people did not see all of the work that you were doing behind the scenes to pound the table to let us know what technology needs to be updated, where the gaps were, how understaffed that we really have been for quite some time. And I'm pleased that you were able to shine a light on that so that we can actually move forward as a city. And I will miss you dearly. I wish you the best of luck. And I know that wherever you land next, they are going to be very lucky to have you. So thank you.
All right. Is there any other reports from staff? No? Okay. And on the agenda next, we have a public hearing for housing. However, we have a guest in the audience and I'd like to have item 8A, the action item for our neighborhood voices moved up so that we can then do that first and then we can, then we will move to our housing elements. So this is a request that I had after talking extensively with former mayor and councilmember from Lafayette, Ms. Candle. And she is here in the audience to present. She is the sponsor of a bill? It's not a bill. She's the sponsor of an initiative that is slated or expected to go forward in November 2024. And I've asked her to speak and give a presentation. So I will yield the floor.
Is that where you head? Hello, everybody. Hi, I'm Susan Candle. I do have a colleague in the audience, Anita Anender. And so if you could bring her in, that would be terrific. So if you can get my presentation up. Not a problem, not a problem. I can introduce myself, though. So I'm Susan Candle. Like Mayor Wan said, thank you. I'm here. I am a city council member of City Lafayette, former mayor. I am not representing my city here tonight. I am here as a proponent of the Our Neighborhood Voices Initiative. And I will be here and explain what that is and why we need it. So go to the next slide. So what is the initiative? It's actually very simple. It's a constitutional amendment that'll be placed on the ballot in 2024 as prop whatever number they give it to us. And the wording is actually pretty simple. It says, when there is a conflict between a state land use or zoning law and a local land use and zoning law, the local law wins. And so what does that mean? So the state since 2017 has been passing like probably about almost 100 laws now affecting our local land use and planning and zoning. The problem with going after each one of those is that it's an impossible task. It's basically whack-a-mole. It's unsustainable. The only way to do it is to pass a constitutional amendment in order to change how these get interpreted. And so like for SB 9 that eliminated single-family zoning in the state of California, when this initiative passes, if, so right now SB 9 says that every single, single-family lot can be split and then broken into, you know, four to six units. If your city did not pass that exact same ordinance, as soon as the initiative passes, it goes back to your local laws. And so it doesn't go after any single one or anyone in general. It goes after them in general. That's the strength of this constitutional of this constitutional amendment. Okay, so you go to the next slide. So who supports it so far? So so far, we've got 34 individual cities. These are all on our website. SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments with 191 cities has supported it. That's the equivalent of ABAG in our region. California Contract Cities with 80 cities, South Bay Council Governments with 16 cities, over 200. Actually, that's just a swag. We have far more than that individual city and council members supporting it and over 25,000 individuals so far supporting it. Right, next slide. So basically, what the state is doing, it's not just land use and zoning. They're basically eliminating local democracy. They have basically shut down your city council's voices as well as your residents' voices. And to me and to many of us, that's just bad policy. Whenever you get a problem, I'm an engineer by education and profession. You know, I get a problem, I have to solve it. I get paid to actually solve the problems. They are not solving the problems and instead they say, we have to eliminate democracy to solve our affordable housing crisis. That's just nonsense. That's a failed policy. And that is actually what unites us in California. Sorry. Overall, it's a very nonpartisan issue. We've got people on every side of the aisle supporting this. And because it's a local democracy issue. I go to the next slide. So all of these policies right now, like I say, you we have to solve a problem. We have an affordable housing problem. None of these laws are actually helping us solve it. And you can see it by the way that all of our cities are failing in arena numbers, right? And so we're not able to produce the very low and low income housing that we're supposed to be creating. We are creating a ton of market rate housing. We're creating a ton of moderate housing. It's not going to help solve this affordable housing crisis. And the state isn't even finished with passing all these laws. Their goal is to completely eliminate any local control in our entire state. This literally is probably our last chance in 2024. The way these laws are coming out, we have to stop this. And and this initiative is the only way that local cities can retain any local control and have our people have a voice in anything that goes in our cities. All right, go ahead. Next one. And unfortunately, the trickle-down theory is what they're trying to make happen. It's a trickle-down theory of housing. It's if we build enough market rate housing, somehow it's going to get affordable. It's not. It will never work. And there are scholars that have said that it'll take decades for this to work. And so it's happening right now in tandem with a lot of institutional developers buying up single-family housing across the entire United States. Like our state and our federal government should be working on anti-speculation policy like other countries like Canada, New Zealand, Germany, all these other countries are getting rid of national international, you know, investments in their housing. Because if housing is a human right, why is it a commodity? And so they're trying to take it down in terms of we should probably be doing anti-speculation legislation and not letting all these people buy up our housing. This is a policy right now that will end up literally eliminating our middle class because nobody will be able to afford housing anymore. It's already started. It's a global problem. And so right now, it's basically a massive transfer of wealth from Main Street to Wall Street and no due process, no protect equal protection and no affordability. If my colleague were on the phone tonight, he couldn't make it. I just got a text from him. The esteemed John Heath, he represents literally 10,000 black homeowners in LA. He knows that the targets are on those communities first. That's why he's fighting it so much. Mayor Karen Bass out of LA had a wonderful comment recently in a newspaper article also defending those neighborhoods against gentrification and displacement, which is what all this market rate housing is doing to their communities. And so it's not just us. It's it's across the state and it is nonpartisan and it is going to hit the communities of color the worst. So who pays for all these impacts for all this housing coming in our cities? We're going to end up paying for it. It's our residents. It's our cities. Because we used to be able to negotiate developer, you know, projects and on all these incentives on big projects to lessen their impacts on our cities. We can't negotiate anymore. I know what's happening here is very different than what's happening in Lafayette. But Lafayette, we literally as a city council and planning commission are rubber stamps. We can't negotiate with the developers at all. And we've been building like crazy. If anybody's gone through Lafayette, we're doing our share. We're doing what we're supposed to be doing. Is it making Lafayette any more affordable? No, it's not. It's actually making us less affordable. And that's not the goal. That's not helping. And that's another reason why we want the initiative in order to be able to talk with developers. If they're putting a big development in our in our city, we want them to help us put in traffic lights. We want it to help have, you know, extra slip lanes and and things like we normally negotiate. They don't have to negotiate with us anymore. And that's going to impact our cities. All right, so go ahead. Next slide. So there are some other efforts to sue the state for some of these laws. They're not going very quickly. They're not going, you know, very fast at all. The problem is that there's too many of them. We can't hit them one by one. Sacramento cannot do land use and zoning for all of California. There's no one size fits all. Our state is so diverse across our state. There's no one size fits all solution that Sacramento can give us on this. And eliminating single-family homes is not required to solve our affordability crisis. You guys are doing your housing element. You're figuring it out. There's a lot of ways to do it, right? And eliminating single-family zoning doesn't have to be the answer. All right, next slide. All right. So here's some polling that was done and it's across the state. We poll at about 65% positive polling on this. We only need 50%. And if you go to the next page, you can see that this is across California, this poll was done across California, across many demographics, English, Spanish speakers, the whole range. And so it has if we can get this on the ballot, it will pass. All right, so go ahead. Next slide. So please join. You know, it's a statewide coalition, you know, with tons of people in Northern California and Southern California. We're just trying to hopefully you will join and pass a resolution tonight in support of our neighborhood voices. Thank you. And Anita, if you have anything to say, if you're on there?
Good evening. My name is Anita Enander. I'm former mayor and former planning commissioner in Los Altos, California. I've been involved with this effort for a number of years and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm kind of the land use nerd in town. So I don't know specifically what's happening in Clayton. Last time I was in Clayton was when I was in college and my roommate grew up there. And I don't think there were more than about 1,500 people in Clayton at the time. I know you've grown tremendously.
Thank you very much for that. There's are there any questions for Councilmember Candle?
Susan, my question is, and maybe and I've been on the website. I still don't understand, and maybe if you explain the wording of the proposition, I don't understand how that proposition would help communities create more affordable housing. Somehow I'm not making that connection. Can you dig a little deeper on that?
Sure. Absolutely. So right now, and this is, you know, bearing out in Lafayette like crazy. We have achieved 200% or so of our market rate housing. We've achieved our moderate housing. We only have like six very low income units and like seven low income units. We can't get our developers in the current framework of all the state laws. We can't tell the developers, no, please don't build any more moderate units. We really, really, really need the very low income units. We used to be able to negotiate with them and the state used to give us redevelopment money where we would be able to entice them and encourage them and subsidize those very low income units. We don't have that anymore. And we've lost our negotiation powers based on all these state laws. So I know in Lafayette, all of the city council members would 100% support if if we could get a developer that put in, you know, a project and they had maybe 10 moderate units. And we said, no, we actually really, really need those very low income units instead. Please do that and we'll approve your project. You know, make it apples to apples in terms of their monetary input. But we can't tell them that now. And so for for us in Lafayette, we're just losing out. We're just getting more expensive because we can't get them to build the low income units. But if we had local control, we would ask them to do it and they would because we wouldn't approve the project unless they did. That's what how local control used to work, right? And so that's how I see it playing out, at least in our city.
Susan, can I add to something there in answer to the council member's question? And that is that the practical effect of the more than 70 housing nominally housing laws that have been passed in the last six years is to allow basically a lot of by right market rate development. And what that does is it takes the best, most practical, most valuable and useful properties where we could do affordable housing and puts them in to development for market rate. So what happens is the market rate gets developed first on the best properties and you have less opportunity to have those larger parcels where it's more efficient and more cost effective to do affordable housing and they're gone.
And my follow-up question then maybe is to Director Ayers. Isn't that part of what our new housing element is going to require that a certain percentage of certain development sites is going to be very low or low income?
Please go ahead.
So currently, the city of Clayton and many cities in California, Clayton is not alone in this, but many cities in California have what's called an inclusionary housing ordinance, which I think is what you're referring to. In Clayton, the requirement is that 10% of the units be affordable, deed restricted affordable. The percentage varies from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. Other places may have 15, some may have 20, some may allow higher percentage for more lower income units and a lesser, excuse me, higher percentage for moderate income units. And, you know, that may taper down if it's a for more lower, very low income units. So yes, the city does have an inclusionary ordinance right now and it's a 10% requirement.
Thank you.
Counselor Kovan, did you have a question? I saw.
I actually was going to ask a similar question and reference the inclusionary housing element we have. Kind of curiosity now. I'm looking at this initiative and it appears that it's still in a draft form. And as I've had conversations with others, it appears it's still going through iterations at this time. How many more drafts do you think until it's ready to go?
Hopefully, none. We took a a lot of time, like literally the last four months, working with the Legislative Council from the state of California. It's kind of was his lull time. And so he was pretty excited to work with us on it. He was able to put in so the last time we tried to get this on the ballot for this last cycle, a lot of people came out and said that there's all these unintended consequences. And so we went to ledge counsel and said, hey, we've got to get rid of those things. Like people were saying, oh, it's going to like revoke CEQA or it's going to do. We're like, no, it's not. And so we put language in to counter out some of those arguments, especially the unintended consequences. We are going through, we're getting some major partners in it and that's that's who's reviewing it right now. We've got, you know, some environmental groups that are looking at it. We've got a labor group looking at it. And we've got a bunch of different groups. We're hoping that they don't make any suggestions to change it. That we won't make changes that will fundamentally change it, right? Otherwise, we won't have a partner. But we're so we're hopefully close. Hopefully, it's almost done. I would love to say it's done. But if one of the partners has some like, I want you to change this word to this. It's like, and it makes no difference to the initiative, then we would make the change.
Thank you.
I'd love to open up to public comment. Oh, sorry. I didn't see. Sorry. I was not trained to look at the screen. Please, Councilmember Kovan.
It's okay. Thank you so much. I do have a couple of questions. It's similar to what Councilmember Chupiano and Councilmember Kovan were were getting to. And I just want to elaborate a little bit more on what Dana was saying. I'm sorry, Director Ayers. Can you tell me how how much affordable housing you were already zoned for when you did have local control, since most cities did have it? How much is in each of your cities? So I'll I'll throw that to Mrs. Is it Enander or Enander? So when you were in Los Altos and then to Mrs. Candle in Lafayette, how much did you guys already zone for in previous years?
Sure. So by state law, we're not allowed to zone for more than 19% on the presumption that more than that makes a project unaffordable, even with the density bonus units that can be added. Los Altos was able on a practical production basis over a period of 12 years to go from where we were producing at about 8% affordable to more than 15.
I think she was.
Is that even with a higher percentage?
Oh.
Inclusionary. You had a gap there, Anita.
Are you there?
Over 12 years and then it went away.
Eight percent and then you tried to go to and then you cut out.
And then and then what practically what we did was we were able to increase that so that what we were actually producing was about 15%. And what we found, however, was
It's almost like the good part.
Units be affordable, the net result is that if you have an inclusionary requirement of 15%, you may only yield 10% or less of the total project that is affordable because all of the density bonus units are market rate. And this is not sufficient to reach where we need to be. Not easy. It is not going to happen because of inclusionary zoning. It's not going to happen from any single thing. It's a very difficult problem to solve. What the legislature has done, however, is making it worse, not better. And it has taken away the democratic efforts at the local level to do the right thing for your own communities. Local government. It's not to say you can't have inclusionary zoning. You can have inclusionary zoning, but you don't have to do every single thing that the state mandates. If it doesn't make sense in your city, you can do the things that make sense and you can even do new and more creative things than what's mandated in state law.
So then just to continue down that that track of conversation then, what you were breaking up a little bit. So I'm sorry if I missed it.
Sorry.
What what ideally would you like to see in Los Altos in terms of affordable housing? So understanding that, yes, the state has taken away funding for it and that's a problem. And I would agree with you all on that. And and I'll come back to that in discussion. But what's a number that you would like to be able to see in your city?
I think it's it's a number that needs to work regionally with what's happening. We just recently approved a 100% affordable project. We are thrilled. Every single part of my community, and I'm proud that as mayor, we approved that, that we want to have not just affordable projects, but we want to have affordable housing throughout our city. We are a fully built out city. So we have to look at the trade-off between giving up our commercial areas and creating affordable housing. That's a tough call. I would rather have that conversation at the community level and make that happen in places where it's going to be welcome, as is this 100% affordable project that we're doing, than to have the state of California telling me that I have to have ADU allow ADUs in the front yard on the notion that that's.
Yeah.
I think it's not us.
Unfortunately, you cut out at the very end. But I get the gist. I'm not sure if it's maybe there's something with your Wi-Fi or on the Wi-Fi in the location you're in. I will ask the same question then of Mrs. Candle for Lafayette.
Absolutely. So same thing in our city and our city. So same thing in our city, and our city attorney can say the same thing, is that we also had one 100% affordable part of one project that was, we didn't even get one bad public comment from the entire city. It was fabulous. But we can't tell the developers not to build moderate, but we need the very low and the low, right? We can't tell them. We have 15% inclusionary, but you get a 50% density bonus on top of that, which is all market rate. So we're down to like 11%. And, but we can't tell them, like you're doing in your housing elements, we've got these, you know, scales that we're supposed to be meeting. We can't tell them to build in the places we want, in the categories that we need. And that's what, that I know our council would totally support that if we had local control again. Does that make sense?
And then just a follow up question.
Yeah.
Just a follow up question for that. Did, is Lafayette signed on to this? Is your city council?
Not yet. We haven't, we have a new mayor and we're going over our goals and we're going to be talking about it at our goal setting meeting in a couple of weeks.
Okay. How many other cities in Contra Costa County have signed on to this?
Brentwood and one of our proponents, she has a, she's, will be here tonight, Mayor, a Councilmember, Hovida Menzozza from Brentwood, would be here tonight, but she has a city council meeting. There's a couple, there's 32, I don't exactly remember, in the state of California.
And I think it's back to one of the other council members' questions earlier. Because we have just now really gotten to where we're pretty sure this is our final language. We've not been asking cities to move on this.
And again, now we're starting our push again.
Okay, so I guess, so is what she was saying then, that the cities that have already signed on then are not signed on to this latest draft that we had before us tonight? Is that accurate?
I don't know if they need to sign another resolution or not. Yeah, I don't know. We'll have to address that. To, I guess, give them the option if they want to look at the new one and consider a new resolution. They don't have to.
I think the current iteration as compared to prior versions is specifically designed to address some of the concerns that weren't furthering the goal of the initiative, but were unintended consequences.
Correct.
So to the extent that they had signed on prior to the gist of, or not the gist, to the thrust of the language, that remains unchanged.
I would agree with that.
That's how I would address that.
Thank you. And then I do have another question you had mentioned earlier. I believe that you said it was John Heath. And then you've mentioned now Mayor Bass, but she was Congresswoman Bass. And the gentrification that's happening, I'm assuming down in Los Angeles and possibly other cities in, throughout California. Can you walk me through that piece? Because I did see that that was prominently displayed in one of the first paragraphs on your website. Can you, I know what gentrification means, but can you walk me through how this solves for that?
Sure, so.
And what your concerns really are in the Bay Area up here.
So this is true in LA, but this is also true here in Northern California. So on January 12th, there was an article called Give Me Shelter, and it was with Mayor Karen Bass and Liam, LA Times reporters Liam Dillon and Ben Oreskes, I don't know if I'm pronouncing his name correctly. And they wanted to address the California housing crisis. And so in that interview, all of a sudden Liam Dillon says, all right, let me jump to the next one. "The construction of market rate homes in disadvantaged areas does not cause gentrification or displacement, but instead prevents it." That was his question to her. And I don't know about you, but that is the textbook definition of gentrification. And so Karen Bass, bless her heart, fabulous woman, goes, that's false. That's completely false. I'm sorry. And he goes, say more about that. And she goes, well, I mean, the area that I lived in to, in, until a few weeks ago in South LA, there is no question of market rate housing. People who paid $150,000 for their homes, if you put a market rate house next door, it's going to be close to $1 million. And he goes, so explain how that is, that this drives gentrification and displacement. She goes, well, because you know, the people that live in that neighborhood, let's say you want to move to another house in the same neighborhood, you can't afford it if it's market rate. The other thing that happens is, you know, you have people selling their homes, and I understand that. So we have stories upon stories from people in these neighborhoods who are getting calls literally every day to sell their house in these areas of communities of color. And that's the people that John Heath represents. And they are standing up, they are rising up. We have a ton of support from those communities. And they should. They should fight back on this push, push, push for all market rate housing. It's not going to help their communities, it's going to hurt them the most. So that's what Karen Bass said, and I was very proud of her. And the Twitterverse blew up over it, trying to educate her that she's wrong, but she's absolutely right. This is gentrification at its core.
So in, in looking then, here in the East Bay and even at Los Altos, I'm not finding the connection then to our cities, including Clayton, being gentrified.
Me too, and nothing in our city.
Right, right. So then I'm trying to understand then, if, looking at your group as a whole and what your mission is, and bringing this initiative forward, I'm trying to understand the connection. I guess it's all encompassing for all things that affect Californians. But that particular sentence in your first paragraph, first or second paragraph on your website page, it struck me as odd, since that is not happening in any of the cities that are out here in central Contra Costa County. And I can't speak, I know as well as in Los Altos. So I'm trying to understand, and you even mentioned it, I believe, in one of your slides. I'm trying to understand how that affects a city.
It's a statewide initiative, right? And so you have people in Oakland, Carol Fife, who has been absolutely championing that for her West Oakland constituency. And she's the one that did Moms for Housing. Remember when that, when there was, they have more vacant homes than homeless in West Oakland, right? And she was an absolute champion, along with her friends that did that, that had people come and they eventually were able to buy some houses for them. That's the kind of thing, they're leaving, you know, these corporate investors are leaving these houses vacant, not only in West Oakland, but in LA and, you know, all other places. They don't want to lower the rents. They don't want to let people live there. And they're keeping them as investments. And so that's why I'm calling that gentrification, because it's this institutional wealth that's taking homes away from people where they need it the most. And that's, and that's what, if Oakland had control, local land use control, they could stop that in West Oakland, but they can't right now. And that's what Carol Fife, that's how she got elected, was to fight for them.
And it's, it's true. There, there is not a gentrification issue in Los Altos. But there are different issues in all cities in California. And the initiative is intended principally to allow local leaders and.
Right. Local democracy is best. It's the closest to the people.
I think we may be having trouble with some of the audio.
In the way that works for them, for the local city, and not based on a uniform state rule.
Right.
Okay, so then just one more question that I have, Mayor Juan. And then that is, and this is for our guests. If there are cities then, who you were saying that they should listen to the residents and do what the residents want them to do. If the residents are saying that they don't want affordable housing there, how does this initiative solve for that? Because it sounds a little bit like it's going back to status quo, which is exactly kind of where you have a lot of cities who weren't building affordable housing based on how their cities were zoned. And so if they're allowed to circumvent or even supersede state law, which is now saying that you, at least, we've got, we at least in Clayton have this inclusionary housing piece in there, how, how would this not allow some cities to go back to status quo with not doing anything then?
And that is a real issue. And if you go into the League of Cities and you're meeting all these leaders from around the state, I have yet to actually run into a council lately that doesn't believe that we have an affordable housing crisis, that wants to actually help. I think the paradigm has shifted. And the leaders that I talk to are not the leaders of the past. And they are actually far more progressive, as is our residents across the state. And so I think that they're afraid to go back. Our residents aren't going to let us go back, right? They're going to elect those people out. And so I think that fear is in your head, and I don't think it's actually reality on the ground, talking with and dealing with leaders across the state like we have been doing. I think that there's real promise. I think there's real promise that if we can get this thing passed, we'll make the state start working with us again to actually fix this stuff. Because it's affordable housing crisis, it's not just in the state of California. It's a, you know, global problem. But we in California can be uniquely qualified to solve it if we work together. Right now, they're gaslighting us and they're blaming us for everything. It's not all of our fault, right? Cities actually have very little to do with building housing in, you know, honestly, except approve projects, which we do. We've approved a ton of projects and they don't get built. And so we just need to reset and start to actually work together again and solve this problem. And I don't, I don't think that there's many leaders across the state that I've talked to that don't agree with that.
Okay. I would open the, open the item for public comment. If there, if you want to stay, you're welcome to stay.
I'll be over here, yeah.
Okay. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment on this item, now is your time.
How do I start the clock? Press the green button?
I think the green button's on, so you can, I see the light.
It's red right now. Oh, okay. My name's Ed Hartley, I live at 972 Kenston Drive. My understanding of the focus of the initiative, just looking at the PowerPoint that's on the table, is that this is a concept to give local cities veto power over state law. That is a pretty big deal. I believe there's clearly an imbalance between what the state imposes on communities like Clayton versus what we have the ability to control for ourselves. And housing is clearly an issue that is near and dear to everybody in this town. Just looking at the housing element portion of the agenda, it's hundreds of pages long. And yet, what I'm hearing is that, right now, the city is being asked to vote on a concept and not an actual initiative. This initiative, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, has not been approved for inclusion on a ballot. And so there is no way for anyone, including this council, to assess the potential benefits, the potential consequences, or even speculate on the unintended consequences until we know what people are going to be asked to be, to vote on. Now, that doesn't mean I am against some of the things that were said. But what I also heard is that we don't think there'll be any changes to the initiative. We don't think other people are going to weigh in. That's not, that can't be good enough for us. Okay, if we're going to, if this is something that is that important, and I think how we control our local housing is very important, we need to understand what we are debating. And this is not it. This is just a debate on a concept. So I think the matter should be tabled unless and until this actually qualifies for the ballot. And then we can have a full public debate, a full public airing, and hear everybody's views on what they think about it. And then the city can make an informed choice as to what it's going to support. So again, I'm not necessarily against what's being said here, because I agree with a lot of it. It's not ripe for this city to consider it tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment from folks in the audience here? I see several hands raised, so Janet, if you would, go ahead.
Sure. Amy, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you will have three minutes to speak.
Honorable Mayor Juan, esteemed city council members and staff, my name is Amy Heinschike, and I'm a former Clayton Planning Commissioner residing in the Regency Meadows neighborhood of Clayton since 2012. I am writing to request that you decline to pass the resolution in support of the Our Neighborhood Voices ballot initiative. This ballot initiative is a cynical attempt to refurbish a refuted idea that failed in 2022, so it can look bright and shiny new in 2024. In truth, it is the same tired approach that hasn't been working, and the voters will be able to see right through it, just as they did last year. We all know that California is in a state of crisis as it pertains to housing. We all saw it on Nextdoor in May of 2021, when one, one unhoused individual came to stay in Clayton, and the comments were as if someone had lit the hills on fire. One thing I have in common with these sometimes very offensive commentators is that I believe that homelessness is abhorrent. It should not exist in our society, and everyone deserves a home. Housing is a human right. But if we really and truly believe that homelessness is abhorrent and we cannot oppose the production of affordable housing, then we cannot oppose the production of affordable housing. Those two things cannot exist in the same space. We cannot get in the way or otherwise suppress solutions such as affordable housing construction in our community. And that is why this resolution is wrong, and I'm asking you to vote no. We are in crisis, and we cannot stand in the way blocking solutions in the name of our neighborhoods. Most of the affordable housing organizations, progressive groups, and environmental groups do not support this and have not supported it. It is not a pro equity measure, as these proponents have maintained. And those statements in the material are window dressing on a harmful measure. Please vote no on the Our Neighborhood Voices ballot initiative. I'm done.
Thank you. I think Mr. Miller is both next and in the room.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Juan. I appreciate it. I'll be very brief in my comments, but this was an issue that was very near and dear to me during the campaign. I mentioned that I had great concerns that the core causes of the skyrocketing cost of housing and the competition all over, what happens with the RENA process and everything, kind of comes back to a different problem, which is that there are jobs so centrally concentrated in the city. And then you are just trying to stack houses on top of houses to get as close as possible to the job centers. And maybe we need to spread out the jobs. But that's not what I was going to comment on here. I am a little concerned about two things with this, although I agree with the way that they're going about it, is they're building a coalition, building support from local cities to try and undo what is a mess of legislation that is coming out of the city, out of the state Capitol, that really is doubling down on failed policies. And will make, the state policies are going to make our problems worse. But my concern is that if we neuter the state's ability to implement anything at a grand scale, that if we're ever able to come up with what a good architecture for this would be, the state will be unable to roll anything out because it will be every man for himself. It will be, everyone will just do whatever they want to do locally. I do kind of agree that with Amy, who spoke before, that this is, for some communities, they will use, this is a Trojan horse so that they can. they will use, this is a Trojan horse so that they can promote their own, they can continue the NIMBY policies of before. There's absolutely no reason to believe that if this passes Huntington Beach and the Athertons and whatever, we'll absolutely use this to deny and shut out all of this low-income housing and so forth. So I'm worried about that. We won't be able to proceed forward as one unit if we completely neuter the state. I think we'll see a reversal back to where there's a lot of NIMBYism and these projects fail. But I do think that, to Ed's point, and this is my last thing to say, is to Mr. Hartley's point, if there was something articulating a particular plan and approach forward, as opposed to just the state can't tell us what to do, I think that would be something worthy to, you know, jump on board if there was a sensibility in the architecture of that sign. Really appreciate your time. Thank you very much, all.
Thank you. Janet, do we have others online with their hands raised?
Our next speaker is Tuya. As you are promoted to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, good evening. Tuya Catalano, Clayton resident, former council member, and a land use attorney by occupation. So this is an optional item with no obligation for you to do anything. However, if you do adopt this resolution, the expectation is that you're doing it for the benefit of Clayton and our residents. The expressly stated purpose of this initiative is to give cities more control to adopt their own solutions to solve the affordable housing crisis. The proposed Clayton resolution before you reads that you want to implement your own policies to create more affordable housing in Clayton, because you believe this recent state legislation does not accomplish that. If you vote in favor of this resolution for its stated purpose, you are saying that you want more affordable housing in Clayton, and you believe Clayton residents want more affordable housing in Clayton. If that is the case, it is only fair that if you vote yes tonight, then please tell Clayton residents before voting yes, how exactly you plan to increase affordable housing supply in Clayton. If in reality, you are supporting this legislation because you're reading between the lines and based on the actual but cleverly disguised purpose, you very well know that nothing in recent state legislation is preventing cities from taking steps to achieve more affordable housing or to mitigate any impacts caused by construction of market rate housing to the extent those are real. Clayton has 10% inclusionary affordable housing requirement that applies to market rate projects. You can increase that percentage, and there's nothing in recent state laws that challenge that. If you're concerned about potential impacts caused by market rate housing, you also know that you have the ability to address that in several ways, including via adoption of development impact fees for transportation, school, open space, and other reasons and impacts. Even state density bonus projects cannot get their development impact fees waived, and Clayton already has some impact fee requirements. And all you have to do to justify that the fees are reasonable is with a next study. If none of that actually aligns with your yes vote today, and you're planning to support this resolution, then you likely see it for what it really is, which is a no-growth initiative. But here's the kicker. By having the city, not each of you individually, but the city adopt that kind of optional written public statement, you're really giving the developers a very powerful tool, certainly for the next two years before this gets to the ballot, and possibly longer if it doesn't make it to the ballot, ballot, or if it doesn't pass. If your objective is to prevent development, what you are actually doing is handicapping Clayton by adopting a resolution that will hinder your ability to say no to any development even further, at least for the next few years and possibly longer. If you end up in closed session to discuss the likelihood of litigation on any upcoming project, you can point to a yes vote today as one reason for that. This initiative may attempt to be clever in what its stated purpose versus actual purpose is, and that probably is the only way it will pass as a statewide ballot measure. But there's nothing here that Clayton will benefit from if you choose to voluntarily support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet?
Mayor Juan, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
Okay. I will close public comment.
One just went up. Two just went up.
Please, please go ahead.
Terry, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
So I am not going to reiterate some of the great comments that have already been made by Amy, Ed, and Tuya. I will ask, and I know the council has done their, their homework in reading, reading the background in this initiatives, and, and I see this, I see this initiative come forward on my Facebook feed with, with targeted Facebook ads often, and I've followed, I've followed this group. And one of the things that I always find a little bit disappointing is, is when you see some of these initiatives that make these, you know, these claims without much data. Sorry, I'm getting an echo from Tim's computer.
Can we mute her for a moment? Who's that?
It's going to be that kind of night. Thank you.
Apologies, we had the, we had the, no?
It's still there. Yeah, it looks like Councilmember Gia's mic might be on. That's what we see.
I'm off the air. Okay.
No.
All right, apologies. Terry, we had to cut you off for a moment because we were having a lot of feedback. We can, if you can go ahead again, and, and we'll, we'll start again, or you can continue from where you left off. Apologies for that.
Yeah, sure, no problem. Yeah, so, so, you know, so if you go to their website and you follow some of the links that they include along with, with their assertions, some of these links, you know, are studies that don't have a lot of backgrounds to them, they're not peer-reviewed studies, there are assertions. And I, I challenge the, you know, I challenge the fact that, that Councilmember Candela is, is leading this effort and will come to, has come to us speaking about the desire for affordable housing, when I think a lot of us are very aware of the Terrace Project that went through several iterations in Lafayette to finally get to the large projects that it came about to be, you know, without, without that council really pushing forward affordable housing and trying to, you know, trying to shut that project down for a number of years. So I, I think that there's, you know, as, as, as Mr. Hartley said earlier, I think there are some good pieces of information in this initiative, but I think there's a lot of smoke and mirrors, and the council really needs to ask some, some tough questions before we sign on to, to something without really knowing what this is all about. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. How are we doing, Janet?
Mayor Juan, the hand that was raised actually went down, so right now I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
We'll close public comment.
Okay.
Did you, did you want to have a, a response to any of the comments ever made? Please go ahead.
Really quickly, AIDS Healthcare Foundation is the parent company as housing as a human, human right, and they are one of our biggest donors for this effort. So to say that, that we don't have affordable housing people, John Heath is an affordable housing developer. We have a lot of affordable housing partners in this effort, so that is not, I just want to dispel that, that, that theory. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'd like to bring it back for discussion if there are any comments that my fellow council members would like to make or discuss. Now is the time.
Turning off the mic. Hey, I was your delegate to Cal Cities this past meeting in Long Beach. I sat at the table with Neil Andritz and had a long conversation. I was constantly asked to sign the petition for Our Neighborhood Voices as I walked in the door and asked numerous times until I did not sign it, because I didn't have enough information. But I was also smart enough to know that I needed more information. And while I was your delegate and had the voting card, I raised my hand for the debate at the, at the, the meeting, so that we could, I could actually hear and have a discussion about it. The debate was turned down. There was more voices for no than there was for yes at that time. I think it's because we were late in the day, we all wanted to go home, so it, but I'm, I'm very curious about this, and I've been paying attention for quite a while. Talked to Jason Ryan today with Cal Cities. He's the Assistant Director of Legislative Affairs for the League of California Cities. And the reason why I did so is they are, for no lack of better words, our lobbyist, our, our group that represents us as a city at a legislated level. And it was at that meeting, it was suggested to take it back to committee, both in housing and policy committees, to review. Jason told me today that they are planning on having a meeting on this on January 26th, and it's on the agenda. He's also told me there have been multiple iterations that he's reviewed in the past couple of months, and so that was the impetus for my question. What's going to happen is we're going to have a review by our lobbyist available to us on January 26th. And we can actually look at the minutes of that review and see what their, their take is on that. I think that'd be a valuable dataset to have prior to making any decisions regarding this. But more importantly, is when they get this finalized, Our Neighborhood Voices get this finalized, and I have no doubt that they will do so, they will submit this for approval or to be put on the ballot. And they're going to send it to the Attorney General's office and the Secretary of State's office. And I suspect that that will happen this, sometime this summer, so within the next four or five months. That's typical for the, the submittal time for these type of initiatives. At that point, there's going to be a 180-day review, and they get their chance to get their, all their signatures. I think it's like a million signatures they need. There's going to be a 30-day period after they submit it to the Attorney General and the Secretary of State's office, for them to look at the comments that are coming in from people who have not reviewed it, and it may be modified again to address some of those comments, and eventually put in the ballot in 2024. And while I understand that you've been following this as well, I know you're part of Livable California, and you signed on as a council member, Vice Member, Vice Mayor of Clayton, as part of that group. I completely would understand if any one of our council would like to sign as an individual council member to support this initiative, but I think it's premature as a council to even suggest reviewing something that's not finalized. It's kind of like signing a blank check, because we don't know what it's going to look like in the end. And my suggestion would be to table this until this is finalized. I can get behind it once I see the final product and see the reviews from our, our lobbyists and attorneys, and we'll make, have a much better discussion at that time. That's my comments.
Are there any other comments from my fellow council members? I'm also looking on the screen as well.
I would concur with Peter and with some of the speakers. Sorry, there's such a delay. I'll be brief. I do also have some concerns. The premise that they start off with, I would have to agree with, that, that a lot of our cities, all of our cities are in part of the predicament that we're in because of the state funding being taken away. And I would fully support an initiative that was solely going after that, if that's what this was tonight. I wouldn't have an issue signing on. But I am concerned that this isn't a final, it's not a final draft, and there are some elements of it that do seem a little off to me, especially with the, the push for the affordable housing piece, and just thinking about our city as a whole and doing what's best for our town and our residents. I do like the idea of having the local control, which we do. And in fact, we're going to talk about it when we get to the housing element, and we did at length last week at our, at our session. So knowing how our residents feel about particular housing in, in Clayton, I, I can't get behind the, the initiative with the wording that it has currently. And so I, I'm in full agreement that I would much rather wait until this is a final draft, bring it back, and then see if that's something that we can all fully sign on to, or continue to do it as individual council members. And if there are any council members tonight who are in favor of signing this, you know, there, there's language in here that reads, ah, I just lost my page, hold on, about having control over affordable housing and where, you know, I'm, I'm paraphrasing, because I can't get to the page right away. And if that's the case, I'd want to know where is it exactly that you would want to put this affordable housing, and what does that look like? We can get into it a lot more in the weeds when we talk about our housing element, but since we're already on this and we moved this in advance of that discussion, I would like to hear from anybody who is in favor of this in its current form to understand where that housing would go and what does that look like. Because to Tuya's point, Mrs. Catalano's point, we do owe it to our residents to let them know then that this is something that we're going to sign as a city, that this is something that you're in favor of, and exactly how that looks in our, in our small, landlocked town. And we had that discussion last week about, based on the geography of our city, and the fact that we are completely, almost built, not completely, but almost built out, where do we put housing? And we've already, we've already put on our housing element where those types of housing can go. And I'm just not sure that this document in its current form solves any, any of the other issues that we might come across. And so those are my comments.
And the only other thing I wanted to say, I do love the concept. I love the concept of local people having a voice about affordable housing and not feeling so mandated by the state. I think a lot of people in this community are feeling that way right now, that the state is telling us what to do and we don't have a voice. But I think I too would like to see a final draft and maybe wait until after that session with League of Cal Cities for a further review. So that's my comment.
This whole issue of planning for our communities, not just Clayton, but anywhere, there is definitely a move in Sacramento to try and manage, control, and operate all this from there. Having worked up there for five years, I saw some of them in action, trying to do things in other, in other facets. And if this is a concept, which apparently it is, I, I would assume that there are some people at work trying to develop language that will be acceptable for an initiative at some point. But my question is, how long do we let them keep going without drawing a line in the sand? And quite frankly, I'm, I'm prepared to move forward with this. It's got to start someplace. It's a grassroots level, it's moving through a variety of communities, and I think Clayton ought to be one that signs on to this. Thank you.
And I would just say that I don't think that there's any one reason why there, why support may be held for, for the initiative. I think folks may have a variety of different reasons. It could be various facets of it that they really like, some that they don't like. But on balance, what I see this as is it's either, it's local control versus the state centralized control. And in all, in some manner or in some form, we've all said that we support local control. This is, this is a way to demonstrate that we actually support local control. I, I get the concern that it's not a final draft, but at the end of the day, there's nothing that's going to change that will change it from not being supporting local control. There, you know, there, there's going to be, there certainly will be places, I think the concern is real, that there will be places that would take advantage of the rule and, and be very obstructionist. I think that's a given. So that will happen. But at the end of the day, what it really means is that local cities, local counties, counties maybe, and, and really the residents that live there, like the residents that live here, they should be the ones that have a say in what goes into their neighborhoods. They, they, we get elected to represent them, and we are supposed to, you know, be the voice of the people that have chosen us to represent them. We can do that less and less, the more Sacramento crowds out our ability to actually make those decisions. And so this, while this initiative is, is not perfect, there's no, I don't think there's any one solution to all of the problems. This is not a panacea for that. But it is a step that does, well, I will say, it's not a step that actually does anything. Because if we say we support it, that doesn't actually change any rules. But what it does is it does take a stand as, as Vice Mayor Diaz says. We, we say, we actually support local control. Does it hurt the city? No. Is it going to be the thing that tips the scale? I mean, I'd like to think that we are the greatest city and it will, but it may not. But at the end of the day, it does have to start somewhere. And, you know, to build a coalition, one of the things that I, I really did like about the information on the website was, is the idea that they want to have education sessions, to bring people on, to like tell them what it's all about and to have them support it in their own neighborhoods. You, you know, some person over here may say, this is great because this part of it. And another person in a different city could say, I, this is the part I really like. And they could be different. And that's okay. And what that does is it just builds a wide, a wider breadth of support. And so the reason why I wanted to bring this forward now, even though it is in its early stages, is to be a part of that. I want to say that we see this as a problem. And while this is not a perfect solution, it is at least a step in the right direction. Now, granted, if, if we learn that over time, Ms. Kandel comes back and says, we've completely changed this and now it's terrible. You know, we can, we can take steps there. But right now, I think it goes, you know, I want to be part, I want us to be a part of the thing that says, we believe in local control and that's why we would want to move this forward. So I, I do know, I do get the concern that it's early, but I, I think it would be, it would be good for us. And it sends the message not only to, well, to everyone, but also to our constituents, saying that we are listening and this is important to them so that it should be important to us. And, you know, that, that to me is, is why it is, it is ripe for right now.
No, thank you. And I appreciate that. And I had, I had a feeling that's where you were. So, and that's why you brought it on the agenda tonight. I grew up in Laguna de Gal down in Orange County. My city actually, my hometown, signed this. So I'm not against it. And I'm definitely, I'm in favor of any one of us who feels strongly about it to put their name on the dotted line as a council member or mayor or vice mayor, as it is, to support it. But as a council member sitting here at this table and listening to the comments that came tonight with questions and concerns and actually having a conversation with the Assistant Director of Legislative Affairs for our lobbying entity, I would prefer to wait until we have it right and we know we're looking at. So with that, I put a motion on the floor to table this until we have the final initiative in front of us for review. And at that point, we can have a great conversation and we may support this as a city. But not, not at this point. So I, I've moved to table it.
I'll second.
Well, there's a, a motion and a second. I, I think that means that I call for a vote at this point unless, unless I can do a replacement motion. But I would, I would, I would go for a substitute motion and suggest that we pass the resolution as it's, as it's stated within the agenda. And I would look for a second.
I'm happy to do that. Do we have to vote on this motion first?
The substitute motion takes precedent over the original motion.
Okay. Then I move for approval of the, or adoption of the resolution.
Is that a second? I made the motion.
Oh, you did?
I did.
I'll second it.
All right. I would call a vote for the substitute motion.
Councilmember Trupiano?
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman?
No.
Councilmember Cloven?
No.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Juan?
Aye. With that, the resolution passes. And thank you very much for, for your time and coming tonight. And now we will go back in time to, to number seven on our agenda. Thank you for indulging for a change in the order. And number seven is a public hearing on the adoption of the six-cycle housing element. And with that, Dana, would you like to take us away? Are we good to go?
We are just momentarily. Let me get the PowerPoint deck.
Yes, I will.
You can hum to yourself or sing to whatever you, whatever makes you happy. Mayor Juan, members of the council, thank you for your attention this evening. We are here tonight, as is apparent already, to talk about the housing element and the related environmental impact report for the housing element. And so I'll go over, I have quite a few slides. I'll go over quite a few of them rather quickly because they're repeats from many sessions that we've had over the last year. But I did want to spend a little bit of time discussing the EIR since that is a new topic for this group in terms of meetings and discussions. So again, housing is a mandatory element of the general plan along with other elements. The housing element has to be updated every eight years. The housing element needs to identify programs, goals and policies to further the goal of meeting projected and existing housing needs, including our housing allocation of at least 570 units through the next eight-year cycle. Along with this, there are amendments proposed to the land use element, which I'll also go over tonight, and the zoning code amendments, which will be a later phase in this process, assuming the council adopts the amendments that are identified and summarized tonight. Recent actions, the Planning Commission did have a hearing on this item, the general plan amendments, the housing element, and they did consider the final EIR on December 13th. At the close of their public hearing, they adopted Resolution 042022, recommending council adoption of the amendments, which I will go over in the next few slides. As has been mentioned in the discussion already this evening, the council did have their own workshop last Tuesday. And that was to receive additional comment and provide any additional direction to staff on the draft policies and the sites inventory. And tonight, we're asking for action. Action, yes. And then going forward, there will be public hearings on related zoning code amendments. And those will come in the coming months. So here's where we are. Action.
Yeah.
Yes, action. So to go over the housing element update, just an overview. The goals of the housing element are listed up here on the screen. All of the policies and programs that are identified in the housing element draft that this group has seen, which has been online for about a month now, are summarized, or the, excuse me, come out of these six goals, which generally encourage maintenance of existing housing, encourage variety of new housing types and densities and affordability levels, housing for special needs, removing governmental constraints and obstacles to the production of housing, ensuring equity in housing and equal access to housing regardless of any protected status, and incorporating sustainability into housing production and operations. So as we discussed last Tuesday, the current draft of the housing element provides a plan for Clayton to provide at least 796 projected housing units. It could be a little higher, could be a little lower. This is just what the density could allow with realistic capacity at roughly 80% of maximum. In addition, the draft housing element would implement efforts not just to diversify the housing stock, not just to increase, excuse me, but to diversify the housing stock, including policies in support of accessory dwelling units and multifamily. And then the policies in general would upwardly shift the currently adopted density ranges of the general plan and zoning code to foster more multifamily housing options. The figure that's identified here are the potential inventory sites that are identified in Figure 5-1 of the draft housing element. And then additional programs of the housing element. We want to look to expand flexibility and development regulations for multifamily housing, review and update codified permitting processes, to look for opportunities for streamlining, and then to just support ongoing code enforcement and housing accessibility programs as well as sustainability and new construction. Okay, so since last week, we did have comments, obviously from this group, which you probably all recall, we, some of the, the changes that are identified in the addendum to your exhibit, which we will fold into the final draft, include text that corrects the reference to rental being outside of the current inclusion ordinance. So we've deleted that. And then reflecting that the city is in ongoing efforts to work with affordable housing developers on religious institution sites, we will revise reference to Site B from its old name to Eagle Peak Avenue. And that is throughout the document. I realize there are some tables that, they will also be updated and currently, that they're not all listed in the addendum, but the understanding is that they will all be changed. And then there was a request to modify text in Chapter 7, which is the affirmatively furthering fair housing chapter. I'll refer to that going forward as AFFH pertaining to past land use actions and current community demographics. As I mentioned, all of these are listed in the addendum, what I will call an addendum to the resolution, excuse me, to Exhibit D of the resolution, which is the housing element draft itself. Okay, so that's the housing element. The other component of this, which we are discussing this evening, is the land use element amendments of the general plan. So Program D1 of the draft housing element identifies amendments to the land use element that would implement the housing element draft policies. And so these are listed here. I'm not going to read all of them. I will leave them on the slide momentarily or on the screen momentarily so that people can skim them. But generally, the, the policies, the, the bullet points under Program D1 call for the city to increase densities in appropriate locations, near services, along transit and arterial streets, and on sites where property owners have expressed interest, such as the religious institution sites. There was actually also a suggested revision to reduce, and I didn't catch it on this slide, I'm sorry, for a town center designation to allow residential development on ground floor on side streets or behind commercial facing. And to consider the densities will be more in the range of 20 to 5 units per acre. So we bumped the number down from what you see on the screen. And then in some cases, as I mentioned before, on certain sites where the desire, such as for the religious institution, religious institutions who want to build affordable housing, policy in the general plan would allow them to increase their density to 40 units per acre in certain instances so that we could get more of those units where they are, again, on arterial streets and closer to services. Amending the accessory dwelling unit to ordinance to comply with state law. We actually, as discussed last week, that's already in progress. And then adopting a new policy in the land use element requiring that development be built in accordance with the minimum densities of a land use designation where they're located. And that was also a topic that was discussed last week. We didn't really pin down a number, but the intent of the, of the policy is reflected here. There are also amendments to the land use diagram. So the land use element of the general plan consists of two components. There's the text policies and then there's the actual land use diagram that demonstrates, you know, this is where this is residential, this is commercial, this is open space, this is institutional. So amendments to the, recommended amendments to the land use diagram are depicted here. And they include the Clayton Presbyterian Church, which would, is recommended to be changed from crick record or commercial to institutional density. Diablo Creek Place Open Space, which is south of the Silver Oak Estates project site. The recommended amendment would change it from open space to single family. The Easy Ranch, also an amendment to increase the residential density there. Clayton Road at Peacock Drive, this is the Oakhurst Overflow parking lot. Similar to Diablo Creek, this would be an amendment from private, private open space to a residential density. The Oakhurst Golf Course Driving Range, also revision from private open space to multifamily high density. And then Eagle Peak Avenue, which would be an amendment from rural estate to multifamily median density.
Can I, can I ask one question?
Right now? Yeah.
Am I right to assume that all of these are, these are not new, net new changes? These are just to bring it consistent with the changes that you had already mentioned? Just want to clarify because it makes it sound like these are new, but I think these are all just the same.
These are all related to the sites inventory and the housing element.
Got it, thanks.
So in order to amend the general plan, the jurisdiction, the jurisdiction's decision-making body, in this case, the city council on recommendation from the Planning Commission, needs to find that the amendment is in the public interest. Okay, I'm going to transition now from housing element, from land use element, now to SEQA. Now, SEQA is everybody, I don't know if everybody knows, but nerds like me know that SEQA is an abbreviation for a California Environmental Quality Act. It is a state law that obligates decision-making bodies to consider the environment essentially in their decision-making processes and to maintain a quality environment for people of the state now and in the future. And to take all action necessary to protect, rehabilitate and enhance the environmental quality of the state and to provide the people of the state with clean air, water, enjoyment of aesthetic, natural, scenic and historic qualities and freedom from excessive noise. And then there are guidelines for implementation of SEQA in the California Code of Regulations. I won't get into that. SEQA applies to all projects. And projects are anything that is funded, enacted or permitted by public agencies and that may directly or indirectly result in a change to the environment. SEQA also applies to discretionary projects that are carried out by, by public agencies. And this can include not just development entitlements, but also land use actions that can later occur in, that can later result in development or land use changes. As such, actions that are related to governing and policy documents like general plans and zoning ordinances can result in reasonably foreseeable physical changes to the environment. And so the housing element, the short version of this is the housing element is a project under SEQA. We need to analyze it under SEQA. SEQA does have some exemptions for certain small projects. But for projects that are subject to SEQA that do not qualify for one of the exemptions, they are analyzed under one of these three documents, which are increasing in their, from, from negative declaration to mitigated negative declaration to an environmental impact report or an EIR, they are increasing in the depth of their analysis. For this project, because at the time that we initiated this process, we did not know whether there would be potentially significant impacts. We did initiate an EIR. And it actually turns out that there are more potentially significant impacts that I'll summarize later than. I'll summarize later than, than I think we initially even anticipated. Documents prepared pursuant to SEQA need to evaluate potential impacts in these 20, 20 resource areas that are listed on the screen. And then the process for preparing an EIR, there's, it starts with a notice of preparation. We kick that off, then we move, we write the draft EIR. That is subject to a public comment period, and then there's a final EIR. And then the last phase of preparation, preparation of an EIR is certification, which is where we are now. So at this point, the, there's stuff on my windows, but the decision-making body needs to certify as to the adequacy of the analysis and the EIR. And that needs to happen before action is taken with respect to the project. There also needs to be findings made with respect to each potential impact. And where a potential impact is considered, or is not mitigable, the decision-making body needs to make findings for why that impact is acceptable because of a greater benefit of the project. All in all, that's called a statement of overriding considerations. So the housing, excuse me, the draft EIR consists of Chapters 1 through 6. And then the document that's actually physically attached, not just by web link, but physically attached to your packet, is the final EIR. The final EIR encompasses the draft EIR by reference. It also encompasses the comments that were received on the draft EIR, the responses to those comments, and any revisions that come out of those comments and responses. So the project that was analyzed in the draft EIR analyzed 868 new housing units and about 13,000 new square feet of commercial space and mixed-use projects. The Housing Element, as we're all aware, has continued to evolve since we kicked this project off of preparing the EIR back in winter, almost a year ago now. The Housing Element has continued to evolve, and thus, the project that is described in the EIR does not reflect the current Housing Element that's recommended to the City Council for adoption. And I'm going to get to that italicized text a little bit later. So the resource impacts and mitigations in the draft EIR, there are air quality impacts, potential air quality impacts, potential impacts to cultural and tribal cultural resources, potential soils impacts, greenhouse gases, hazardous materials, noise, transportation, utilities and service system, and wildfire. And of these categories, mitigation measures are proposed for each of those impacts. However, greenhouse gases and vehicle miles traveled will have potentially significant unavoidable impacts. And those are, mitigation measures are identified for those, but the mitigation measures are not sufficient to reduce the impact to an acceptable level. And so in order to continue with the project, this, the council needs to adopt a statement of overriding consideration, again, finding that the benefits of the project outweigh its environmental impacts, before the council can adopt the Housing Element update. Another thing that needs to be encompassed within the draft EIR is alternatives. SEQA requires that every project impact analysis have a no-project scenario wherein nothing happens. And then, in addition, this EIR, so in the case of this project, no-project means that the Housing Element does not get adopted, the Housing Element for the fifth cycle remains in place as the guiding document for housing, and, yeah, and that's, that's the no-project. There are also two alternatives. Again, these came out of public comment that during the public comment period on the Draft Housing Element last spring/summer. There's Alternative 2, which reduces residential development capacity in the Town Center and on Site M, which is commonly known as the Pumpkin Patch Site. And then Alternative 3 keeps those densities lower, but then adds in the Town Center Site and addition of Site U, which is the Golf Course Driving Range, Site V, which is Eagle Peak Avenue, and I forgot to add Site T on here, which is Marsh Creek Road. Alternative 3 is bolded on this slide because this is what your current Housing Element is. And I want to just highlight the differentiation. This is 966 units, which I know is different from the number that you see in your Housing Element draft. The reason for this is because 966 units assumes that everything is built at the highest end of the range of the densities, which, as we've discussed, is not right. How we've projected unit count in the Housing EIR, Housing Element itself, we've projected Housing Element at generally about 80% of maximum. So that's why you see a difference in the numbers. So tonight, action night. The City Council is the final decision-making body on amendments to the general plan and zoning code. And so the responsibility of making the required SEQA findings with respect to the Housing Element lies with this body. Thus, it is recommended that the City Council adopt the resolution that's attached to your staff report, and that resolution makes findings with respect to SEQA, certifying the EIR for the project, and Alternative 3, which, as I stated, is the Housing Element draft, adopting a mitigation and monitoring program that maps out how each of the mitigation measures will be implemented by this agency or by developers going forward, identifying Alternative 3 as the preferred scenario for the Housing Element, and adopting that statement of overriding considerations for Alternative 3, which, again, as I mentioned before, is a statement that the benefits of the project outweigh its potentially unmitigatable environmental impacts. The second component to the resolution is a making of findings and amending the general plan to adopt the Housing Element for this sixth cycle, and adopting the recommended amendments to the text and the Land Use Diagram of the Land Use Element, as I previously summarized. So at this point, I'm going to invite questions, but before I do, I wanted to respond to a question that was asked last week of staff that we did not have an answer for. And that was a question regarding SB 35 and the objective design standards. And I, at the time, staff said we don't have objective design standards, which is actually not true. They, we do have them, they're just spread out amongst various documents. There's not a single document that is a sort of SB 35 checklist. What the statute reads is that for a project that was to come in pursuant to SB 35, the jurisdiction can only apply objective standards. So setbacks, height limitations could be enforceable because those are objective, they are numerical. There are also some, looking at your Town Center's Pacific Plan, there are also some standards. For example, there is a very firm direction that parking shall not be located within the front of a building. Because there is no objectivity there, it is, it is not allowed to be there, it is, that is an objective design standard that could be implemented. So I wanted to follow up on that because I don't think the answer I gave last week was quite correct or quite comprehensive, because this city does have objective design standards. You may want to revisit them to amplify them, to add more detail about fenestration or things like that, but you do actually have objective design standards. But anything that is more subjective, such as encourage, should, those, those may not be as easily enforceable. And so with that, I will invite other questions at this time, and if I need to put the PowerPoint deck back up, just let me know.
Are there any questions from my fellow council members after the staff report?
This is unrelated to what you said, and I probably should have said this last week, but I've had two recent conversations with residents related to the concept of residential care facilities and group homes, which are allowed by right. I need some more information about that and what those definitions are. And the scenario that was given to me is if somebody were to purchase, say, a five- or six-bedroom house in Peacock Creek and decide to make it a hospice facility, is that something that would fall under the residential care facility or group home scenario, which would be permitted by right and not require a use permit or review? So, thank you.
Specific to your question, no. Residential care facilities are by definition non-medical, 24-hour non-medical. So a hospice kind of facility would not, would presumably offer medical treatment. So they would, a hospice does not fall under the same permissions for land use as a residential care facility does by state law.
I, I.
And I was just saying, would that be an elderly care or assisted living facility? Would it be something similar?
Well, assisted living is non-medical as well. I mean, that's, that's semi-independent. You might have some common dining facilities, but assisted living would not be a hospice by, necessarily, right?
I think the, if I, if I may, I think the question is more along the lines of if there, there would be certain types of facilities that fall under the definition, we may trip up over the specifics, but that may fall under the definition that would be permitted by right, that would allow, I mean, maybe it would be more helpful to say the definition of a group home or a, I forget, what was the other item?
Residential care.
If, you know, if you could expand on or elaborate on what the broad strokes of the definition of those two types of facilities, that would, that because in our, in the Housing Element, as it's drafted now, those two types of facilities are allowed by right. And so I think it'd be helpful to understand what those actually are. Is that more?
If you want to give me a moment, I'll find the code section and just, and read off what a residential care facility is, or?
Sure. I think that's okay. Yeah, you can take a look, that's fine.
The gist of it is that it is a residential use that is intended for the 24-hour non-medical care of persons in need of assistance for the daily activities of, I'm not, there's a word I'm missing. Activities of daily living, thank you. So persons with developmental challenges, persons with physical limitations, elderly. The main distinction is it is a non-medical care facility. It is a, a.
Residence.
Yes.
And I think one of the items that HCD identified within their letters of potential constraint is that we essentially should allow these by right, and that's why it's in our Housing Element. Is that fair?
Subject to objective design standards, yes. Or objective standards, not necessarily, not necessarily of design exclusively, but subject to objective standards.
Thanks for the clarification.
Do we have any other questions?
And of course, I'm probably not going to use all the right terminology, but as concerns the East Contra Costa County Habitat Conservancy, it appears that, and I haven't attended even my first meeting yet, which is the end of next month, but is the, it looks like the entire city is within the confines of that conservancy. And my question was, who is the governing body when there are protected areas, protected habitat, you know, wildlife that needs to be protected? Is it the city, or are they the predominant governing body? This question has come up a few times, so if you could answer that.
Please.
Okay. So the East Contra Costa Habitat Conservation Plan is, it's a, it's a, I'm not quite sure the right word to use, but it's, it's a, it's, it encompasses multiple jurisdictions. So the city of Clayton, the city of Pittsburgh, the city of Brentwood, the city of Oakley, and unincorporated Contra Costa County assembled 20 years ago to pursue this effort of enacting an HCP, Habitat Conservation Plan. The HCP provides broad permit protections for take, which means, which can be handling, killing, moving of certain specified sensitive species. And I forget how many, I think it's a couple dozen. It's not every species. A jurisdiction that is a member agency of the East County HCP, following a certain process, that local jurisdiction can authorize take coverage within its boundaries, within its area of jurisdiction, for species that fall within, that are listed within the HCP. For any species that is not covered by the HCP, specific mitigation would have to be identified. So it's not a broad brush, oh, you fill out this form and you can do whatever you want. The species need to be covered by the permit. And if they are not covered by the permit, then specific mitigation needs to be pursued through the Department of Fish and Wildlife, through US Fish and Wildlife, through whoever the permitting agency is for that species.
Thank you, that answers my question, thanks.
And I just want to acknowledge, I forgot to acknowledge Laura Stetson is also on the call from MIG, so, and she's also available to answer questions.
Excellent, thank you. Other further questions from my fellow council members? I did have one question, and you may not know the answer right off the top of your head, so that's okay. I was hoping that you could clarify the number of units and by income category, that the provision for allowing first-floor residential in the downtown would add to the element in total? Like, are you aware of that, the number that that rule provision, you know, adds to our total? Is it like 2, or is it like 50?
I haven't done that math. And the sites that are identified in the downtown are, I mean, there is, as you know, in the inventory, a total projected number of units per site, but we didn't get so fine-grained as to specify what would be upper floor versus what might be downstairs.
Because, yeah, we're adding that provision, and I was just curious what that provision, what the impact of that provision is. So that's okay. That was, that was it, that was my only question. Okay. If we could move it to public comment, that would be great. If there's anyone in the audience that has public comment on this item, I will first open the public hearing. And not only have you waited this evening, but also at our last meeting as well, so please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor Juan, and members of the City Council. You're correct, I was late last week. I had a separate engagement, I thought it would be shorter, and I missed that. And so, and I came here early. So anyway, thank you. What I wanted to state, and Kim is new to the council, and so I wanted to give you a brief history so she understands probably why I'm here. In 85, actually, 88, sorry, 35 years ago, I applied for a minor subdivision adjoining your property, or your city, and was turned down in 1990 by the board supervisors. And they, at that time, said work with the city of Clayton to plan the area for housing. So I and maybe four or five different property owners banded together, and I think there was, I don't know, probably total $800,000, $900,000 spent on the plan, the Marsh Creek Road specific plan. I ended up acquiring the Heartland property, and that, that area on your general plan shows about 108 homes. We may not be in your current RENA cycle, but eventually, we would like to move the urban limit line, which was voted in after the city of Clayton started the plan, but it has been in place for 30 years. And so I think a lot of the problems we have with housing right now are that people are driving so far. And part of that reason is that the urban limit line did not address the greenhouse gases that are byproduct of it. So if you take 35% of an area and you force people to drive around it, we have people driving from the Central Valley to Silicon Valley. I think that, I think the intention is good, but the latent impact on our environment forcing people to drive so far is not good. Last year, one of the reasons our project didn't go through largest developer in the area, Albert Cino III owned the property between us and Marsh Creek Road. We could not, and I tried to negotiate with them to get access, we could not get access. Last year, your council approved a plan to subdivide his property, and I had asked for us to be able us to be able to use his road. I would request that any one of you give me a call. My number is 925-788-9571, I can give it to you. You can come and look at my access. It's unsafe. Peter Klobin, council member, has been there, he goes, "It is unsafe." And if that project gets extended, I would again request that you require that he give us access, which would be safer, our sightline is unsafe. Other than that, thank you so much, and that was my comment for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
This is not the time for that, but I appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
If there's any other public comment from folks in the room regarding the public hearing for the housing element, Janet, is there anyone online that has any comment?
Mayor Juan, I do not have any hands raised on this item. Oh, Juan just went up.
I see, I see your namesake.
Vince, as I promote you to panelists, you will have three minutes to speak. If you can please unmute your microphone.
All right, good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yes, great, thank you. Well, thank you, staff, thank you so much for putting together this six RENA cycle housing element draft. It's, you know, it takes a herculean effort to get this, and with all the new state laws and everything is changing, and the desire to create more housing, it's a tough task, and I appreciate the tough conversations that the city has been having at the planning level here and looking at these critical issues. The one comment I would have in looking at the current iteration of the draft, of the draft, city of Clayton housing element, is that the 199-page document only mentions the Marsh Creek Road specific plan one time, which is a 145-page document in and of itself that in 1995 identified 290 new net units, of which very few have actually been built in the city of Clayton, and this also includes land outside of the city's formal line, but also within the city of Clayton's sphere of influence. We just encourage the same things that Jim mentioned, that the full extent of the Marsh Creek Road specific plan should be considered for future RENA cycles to ultimately help build out city of Clayton to its maximum potential. Thank you for your time, and good luck with the rest of your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Juan, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
I know I went very quick, so I would just pause for like three seconds to see. Okay. And with that, I will close public comments and bring it back to the council for discussion. Are there items that anyone would like to discuss? I do want to make one comment, that all in all, the process for bringing this housing element forward has been, I know it takes a ton of work, and it has been made easier by the fact of all your efforts to do outreach in the community and all the steps that you've taken, and all of those things combined have led to the point where we have several meetings, and yet we, you know, I know other cities will have more rigorous, more rigorous comment, and the fact that we have a largely smooth process, I do think that is a testament to the work that you've done, so I did want to say thank you for that. I have a few comments that I sent, but if there's other discussion items that other folks would like to raise, now's a good time, where I can, I have a couple. I did, earlier I did read through, it's hard to do draft edits on the fly, like in, like in a meeting like this, so what I did in advance was, I had written my comments and I sent it to Dana for edits, and I'd like to kind of mention a few of those, and then we can discuss those or any other items that are on your minds. So, I'm going to pull up a document here. There was much discussion at our last workshop.
Would you like us to, since you did send it to us, so we had it in writing, would you like us to share screen, to put it on the screen? It might not be super readable, or would you just like to refer to it verbally?
Sharing on the screen would be great.
Okay. Dana, would you please share it?
I may have chosen different colors. But that's okay. Hopefully, it's readable, but I guess I will go in order, and I tried to label the page section that I was referring to, so it's for easier reference, so hopefully that works. And I will go through some of these, and then we can, either I can go through them all, or we can talk about them individually, whoever, okay, that's fine. I will wait for them to show up. I would have sent it to everyone ahead of time, but Mala would have a problem with that, so. All right, so what I did here was, I took the page section at the top and then did attract changes on edits that I had. So, that's what, that's what the strikeouts and all that is meant to represent. And I did have one other change that I did after I sent it to you, and we could talk through that when we, when we get to that point. Okay, so the first one was the comment on the history of housing on page 7-2. It references several lawsuits, but I believe it's actually one lawsuit, so I changed that. Is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was just one. Okay, so that's what that is for accuracy there. And then the next strikeout is the, Olivia is not a individual's over 55 development, so I struck that descriptor out.
It was, it was, it's intended and was, is planned as in a senior housing.
Yes. I do believe that was the expressed intent.
Yes.
However, it's not a requirement, and so I didn't think it was, if developer decides that they don't want to do that, there's nothing we can do to, you know, say no to that. And so, for specificity, I didn't think it was, I thought it was less accurate to put it there, because it's not a requirement. That was the nature of that, no, we can talk about that if we want to.
Is that a quote from the Times? I mean, is that paragraph from the East Bay Times, and how it was written?
I don't know if that's a quote. I did not see quotation marks in the document, so I thought it may have been paraphrased.
I don't see a quote, I just see that the source cited, but...
Yes, I see the source, and when I saw that, I took that to mean that the idea was from that source rather than a direct quote. If it was a direct quote, then perhaps the quotation marks? Okay, so, if you couldn't hear that, because the mics aren't on, Councilor Tillman, our staff indicated that it was not a direct quotation.
Thank you.
Okay. The next one, Clayton zoning code, you know, I hear, I think that I changed the language to be less definitive and more conditional, because I don't think that, I did not think that that was supported sufficiently to include in that way. My keyboard went weird. And then that's consistent with the next paragraph here. When we say, I did update the language to say, it previously said, "A density which does not provide much incentive," I changed it to be, "may not provide sufficient incentive" to be more precise. And then just some wordsmithing again in that paragraph. I'm going to pause at each paragraph to see if there's any comments, because I'm just reading. Okay. On the next one, the next paragraph that starts with "These factors have all," I modified the language here, kind of reordered the phrasing, and one of the main ideas that I felt that was conveyed originally here was that, and what it originally read, was that Clayton has fallen behind on meeting its meeting housing obligations, and I don't think that's true. We've met all of our housing obligations through each RENA cycle, because our obligation is to zone, and the production itself obviously has not been, has not materialized, and so I changed the language to reflect that, to say, "While Clayton has met its housing zoning obligations, production of housing units in Clayton has not occurred at the same rate as compared to nearby communities," which I think is what the, what we were trying to say with this paragraph, because then it later goes on to compare other communities as well as cite East Bay Times, or reference an East Bay Times article from 2019, which I read, and it does say pretty much this, "We have not met any of our production goals," but I don't think it's accurate to say we have not met our obligations. Is that, so that's what that is. Okay. The next paragraph, you know, I think this is the one, wait, no. Yes. I think this is the one that starts with "Community and City Council opposition." I think this is the one that we had quite a bit of discussion at our last study session, and I'm not, I think here, when we talk about the single-family housing, or the land use that consists almost exclusively of single-family housing, I think that's pretty much spot-on. Vast majority owner occupied, I think that's all spot-on. The next section, because this is talking, this section is the history of Clayton, I did not think that this part was the appropriate place to talk about the correlation between single-family housing and other, these other poor outcomes. And so, we have other sections within the document that we do talk about those things as the housing element requires, but within the history, within the section of the history of Clayton, I thought it was not apropos for discussing the regional impacts or the correlation between, you know, more widespread, widespread outcomes. Okay. The next, I moved completely, oh, you're scrolling along with me, okay, cool. I, the next, I moved to program J3. This is on page 2-16, for those not following along. Here, okay, so here's where I made other changes to the thing, so I want to revise a little bit, because I played with the words a little bit. The first part here, when it says, "Actions are known," I would end the sentence there and then say, add on to that, "Today, the abundance of single-family housing and marginal inventory of rental units have increased the cost of a home and have made it prohibitive for lower-income households to purchase or rent in Clayton." And I could send you the text of that, because it's not there, so that was the one change. Sure.
Oh, I was like, I don't see it.
Today, after the sentence that says, "Similar actions are known," period, and that's displayed here, and then the next sentence starts with "local," I would delete the rest of that paragraph, and instead say...
I'm having trouble, the reason I'm stopping you is because I, the words that you're reading, I can't...
Yeah, right there.
Okay, local...
So, I would delete that whole thing till the end of the paragraph, because I changed it to make it sound better.
Oh, okay. I was having trouble finding it, thank you.
Okay. And instead of that last section, I would say, "Today, the abundance of single-family housing and marginal inventory of rental units have increased the cost of a home and have made it prohibitive for lower-income households to purchase or rent in Clayton," period, end paragraph. And this is the section that's talking about fair housing and, you know, our reliance on Clutchus County agencies, essentially saying that the county monitors and there's no findings of any of these activities within the city of Clayton.
Can you read yours again?
Sure. And sorry, it's hard to do it like it's hard today.
We're seeing staff's being right, so they don't have your...
So, I will, I will try to do it again. Are you going to, okay, so Dana, Dana will attempt to stenography as we go.
Okay.
"Today, the abundance of single-family housing..."
But it's going, is this in the right location?
She'll fix it, yeah. "Today, the abundance of single-family housing and marginal inventory of rental units have increased the cost of a home and have made it prohibitive for lower-income households to purchase or rent in Clayton," period. Oh, now it's going to be weird. "Households to purchase or rent in Clayton." Thank you, Dana. Yeah. Yep, there you go. Delete, yeah, like that.
Well, don't delete it yet, I'm still trying to...
No, no, it's just a strike through, so that you could see the deletion.
Oh, okay. Yeah, thank you.
Editing on the fly is very elegant. Okay. I will, I will give a moment to digest that, because I know it's just been on screen. Okay. The only other thing, comment I had was, on the next section, if we go to regional trends, did I have that? No, actually, there's no change on that one, my bad. So, this was at towards the bottom of the document, I couldn't find, I neglected to put the page number, sorry. But in, the advantage of sending it to Dana ahead of time was she informed me that this was essentially a requirement and taken directly from statutory language, so I will modify this, and instead of that, deleting the section, because it is from the, it is from the statute, I think I, what I would do here is, I would scratch or strike the, and more specifically, clause, and then retain historic patterns of, and the actual, as Dana informed me, the actual language says "integration or segregation," and just leave it like that, if that makes sense. Because that is, that is the language that is in the statute.
Just for the record, this is a finding in Exhibit C of the resolution, this is not in the housing element itself.
Okay. I think it was "or."
I think I typed, I think I said "or," but the statute is "and."
I think it's "or."
This, the statute is "and." I mean, if you, they're your findings, but the statute is "and," and I, I think I, I don't think I quoted statute correctly.
Well, if that's what the statute says, let's match what it says.
Match statute, which would be "and."
And, and we could verify.
There's something missing in that sentence.
You can just reject the change, I think, that will be easier.
Historic patterns of integration and segregation.
Yes.
Without the "and" more specifically, but putting back historic patterns of.
Yes. That was the extent of my comments or discussion items. Okay. And with that, I would, I would, I guess I would entertain a motion. Are we at that point yet, or no? Let's see, let me look at your recommendations. So, I think we're taking, the recommendation is to take three actions. One is the finding for the EIR, two is the amendments to the land... Two is the amendments to the land use elements. And three is the repealing of the fifth cycle and then replacing it in its entirety with the sixth cycle that we've just discussed. And then the fourth is amending the land use element in diagram. And these are the recommendations in the agenda. And as amended with those comments that we just made, plus all the things that you had mentioned in the beginning for consistency, I would entertain a motion for, do we have to do them separately?
No, it's one resolution with multiple exhibits.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion for the resolution with those changes as discussed.
I'll second that.
We have to make the first. Yeah. You would make the first motion.
That's what I thought the last time. You did, you did, but I did. But anyway, yes.
I, I guess I will make the motion to adopt the resolution as discussed with the changes that we just went through.
And I will second that.
Okay. Janet, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Chupiano?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Juan?
Aye.
And with that, thank you again, Dana and our folks at MIG for all the work. Okay. Our next item is a resolution approving an employment agreement. Raina, would you please take us away?
I would be delighted, Mayor and council members. First, I just want to congratulate Dana, her staff and our consultant, MIG, on all their work on the housing element and the council and communities and commissions, patience and engagement while we went through this. So HCD still has to do their thing, but we are well on target. And it's, it's been a huge lift. So congratulations to everybody involved. So thank you. With that, I am very pleased, very pleased to be bringing you this evening an employment agreement for an interim city manager, Ron Bernal, who was selected by the council to move forward and be recommended for this interim employment agreement with the city. My last day is February 3rd, so he will take over formally as interim city manager on February 4th. He will start before that, so we have some overlap to allow for a smooth transition. He is an experienced public sector manager. He was the city manager for the city of Antioch from 2017 through 2021 and completed a number of significant and complex projects while he was there. He is well poised to assist the city of Clayton as we move through this interim period. And I know that he's going to do a terrific job. He also has relationships already with the other managers in the county. So he will have a lot of resources to call upon for assistance within the county and keep us connected to all of our fellow agencies, which is a, a big benefit for a small city like Clayton. And he is here this evening. And I would respectfully request your approval of the employment agreement with Mr. Bernal.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of council? I will open the item up for public comment. If there's any public comment from anyone in the room, I will let you make a statement in a moment. Is there any comment from anyone in the room? Is there any comment from anyone online?
Mayor Juan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
All right. Then are there any items that we would like to discuss?
I, I just want to, if we move forward on this, I want to welcome Mr. Burle to the community here. And I know he'll bring a lot of good experience. I got, I talked to a number of people over in, in Antioch. In fact, last Thursday, I actually got a grand tour of Antioch, which I never had done before. And I was absolutely amazed, just first of all, all the land that's out there and ready for development. And it looks like it's in the plan to do that. And a huge public works department, which I'm sure he's going to bring very good experience to our, our community and assisting us with our much smaller version of, of public works. But I know he'll, he'll bring a lot of good expertise there and the experience he, he brought, not only as public works director for Antioch, but also as a city manager. Thank you.
All right. Well, then I, we need a motion, right? Would someone care to make a motion? I'll, I'll phrase it that way.
I will make a motion to approve the agreement, or whatever we wish to call it, to offer the job of interim city manager officially to Mr., Mr. Roland.
Bernal.
Bernal. Bernal. Thank you.
We have a first by Vice Mayor Diaz and a second by Councilmember Tillman. Janet, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Chupiano?
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Juan?
Aye. And with that, you are hired. Would you like to?
Welcome.
All right. If you please, if you'd like to say a few words, that would be great.
Sure. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I know it's a big decision when you hire a city manager interim or otherwise. And so I look forward to serving you all and the community and leading the, leading the staff, moving forward your initiatives and policies and priorities, one of which was accomplished tonight, which congratulations, that's, that's a big deal to, to get through the housing element. And I'm just excited to get started and add value to the community here in Clayton and learn a little bit more of what makes it so special. So thank you.
I am so glad you were here. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
You have your work cut out for you and this is going to be awesome. All right. And with that, we move to, we move to item eight C. And that is a resolution approving an addendum to the terms and conditions of employment for Clayton's miscellaneous employees. Raina, to you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a very straightforward item in front of you this evening. All of the employees of the city who are not covered as sworn police officers or sergeants are covered under our miscellaneous unit of employees. And the current terms and conditions of employment that were, were approved for that group formally expired at the end of June of 2022. All the basic provisions have been continuing, but the terms themselves had expired effective July 1st of this year. The council did approve with the budget and the publishing of the salary schedule, a 3% cost of living adjustment for this unit of employees. But we never memorialized that in a terms and conditions of employment. Additionally, in front of you this evening is a recommendation to approve an increase in the maximum amount of vacation hours that an employee can accrue to align the miscellaneous employees unit with a change we made with the Police Officers Association in effective July 1st, 2021. So with that, there are new, no new budgetary funds required for these changes. This will put in place a current terms and conditions of employment for your interim city manager and your next permanent city manager as they come on board. So it gives them a, a better starting point rather than coming into a situation where there is only an expired document. And so with that, I would be happy to answer any questions and would respectfully request your approval of the amendment.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from my fellow council members for staff? All right. And with that, I would open, there are no questions. I would open public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment or anyone online, now is your time.
Mayor Juan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
All right. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. Any commentary from, or discussion from us?
Move approval of the resolution.
I would second that.
Second.
Third. Janet, would you please call a vote?
Councilmember Chupiano?
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Juan?
Aye. And with that, that passes. And we move on to council items. This is requests for future meetings. Do we have any items from council that they'd like to discuss at a future meeting?
I have two things. One is I was notified by the founder of Clayton Valley Village that they would like to come and make a presentation to the council to give them an update on what the village has been up to and, and share some of their needs and how they think the city can be an even greater part of the village. And they asked me when there would be an opportunity on a future agenda and what the time allotment would be. So are we able to provide? She said, how about sometime in March?
So that's something that we can get back to you on the timing specifics.
And then her time allotment, do we limit?
It's discussion.
Discussion, okay. I'll let her know, thank you. And the other, and I know I sound like a broken record, but I saw one of the residents of Diamond Terrace again today. And they keep saying, don't forget about us with their increase in amenities and to keep looking into that because people are leaving. And we know many of the seniors are on a fixed income. That's it.
Okay. With that, I will move on to council reports. And Councilmember Tillman, since you are remote, I will, if you can go first, that would be great.
Sure, it'd be my pleasure. Thank you. Very brief, since we had the holiday and our last full council meeting was middle of December, just before Christmas. But we did have our study session last week for the housing element that all of us attended and participated in. I also had a couple of meetings with the Cal Cities Community Services Policy Committee that I'm the vice chair on. We will be having that meeting on the 27th of January. That is open to the public. So if anyone here would like to join that, I will be sure to have that posted since it is a Brown Act meeting. We also, I also attended the Cal Cities East Bay Division meeting last Thursday. And I was actually elected as the new board, in a new board position. I'm in the at-large position for that. So I'm now on the Board of Directors for Cal Cities in the East Bay Division. And what else? Meetings with Raina. And I did have several conversations with residents regarding the Trails and Landscape Committee and all of the flooding that occurred on, on New Year's Eve and subsequently after that. And they wanted to know what happened with the Cardenay Trail and how that was faring. So we will be having a Trails and Landscape Committee meeting this coming Monday. And I believe that begins at 6:30. And that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is, is the TLC meetings on Zoom also?
Is the TLC meetings, pardon me?
On Zoom also?
They are not. They are in person only. We don't have the, the technology set up to make them hybrid.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Clovin?
I had a chance to attend the mayor's conference in person. I did so because last year we didn't do it in person. So all these people I saw in the Hollywood Squares Zoom meetings, I got a chance to meet in person. And it was kind of a nice thing to be able to shake hands with people you haven't seen on video for so long. So that was great. I'm looking forward to your attending in the future. Both Councilmember Diaz and, or Vice Mayor Diaz and Mayor Juan were there representing the city as well. I've had multiple conversations with residents, a lot about the storm damage on Cardenay Trail, also regarding the housing element and some of the aspects associated with that. And most recently regarding concerns about the item we talked about for our Neighborhood Voices tonight. I responded to emails and phone calls. That sounds familiar. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Chupiano?
Along with Councilmember Tillman, I was also at the League of Cal Cities last week as a new council member. And I am leaving for Sacramento in the morning for three days of training for all new city council people. So hopefully my terminology will be better when I come back. But that's basically, and a lot of emails and phone calls on the housing element. So I, I hope we did right by the citizens today. Good job, Director Ayers.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Diaz?
Thank you. Starting on the beginning of the year, January 3rd, we had our second Art and Wine Committee meeting. And that's moving along very well, coming up on the 29th and 30th of April. So get, everybody get ready for that. Attended the mayor's conference on the 5th. Went on Saturday, the 7th. Assisted a number of people in taking down all of the holiday decorations. That's another thing that's sort of amazing is how quickly that went by. It would just seem like the weekend before we put them up. But we had a good team of people out there. We were done in less than probably an hour doing the whole thing. On the 10th, I attended the reorganization of the Contra Costa Board of Supervisors and saw our new representative for number four, Supervisor Ken Carlson, being sworn in and moving forward. So that was a huge turnout in the middle of the rain. We, we had a downpour over there in, in Richmond. It was just unbelievable. I thought it was going to come through the, the tents that they put up. But it was, we got through it and the board is all set to go for this next year. Attended later that evening, the special council meeting of the city council. Then on the 11th, out at Morgan Territory for the Community Association meeting out there, MTCA. Then. What did I do? I put, I had another thing on there, but it's obviously not that big of an important meeting. But then today I met with the police chief and the city manager as usual. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I've spent some time since our last meeting. It's been almost a month and I've, I've tried to meet with various members of, of department heads within the city. And I'll continue to do so if I, if we haven't already, just to get a sense of where we're at. I know that we have a lot of issues to deal with. And it, I, sometimes I find it best to, to meet with the folks directly, especially given Raina's impending departure, which again, this is your last meeting. So I did want to recognize that as well. I, I attended the mayor's conference for the first time in person. And the first time. And it was, it was great. I, I think I saw some of our, our folks there as well. And just meeting with the folks. And I, you know, the mayor of, the mayor of Pittsburgh is, her, her child goes to school with my child. So I was like, oh, hey, how's your kid? So that was kind of fun. We had certain closed sessions that we weren't allowed to talk about prior, but the, the fruit of that closed session is Mr. Bernal here. So that is great. So I wanted to share that. We all participated in that. And, and while I was very anxious to share that information because I'm excited, we had to hold it until tonight. So a lot of conversation around the storm and related impacts of the storm. And I want to thank our maintenance crew, crews, as well as our police department for their, for their work. They responded rapidly and, you know, diligently to all the things that were going on. And I, I imagine that they were very busy over the last several weeks. So thank you for that. Especially the area right near, like the road where I am was blocked by mud almost every other day. They brought out bulldozers like every other day to push dirt. It was a lot. So just saying. So that's great. So thank you very much for that. And then obviously I had conversations with Councilmember Kandell about. And then obviously I had conversations with Councilmember Kendall about the presentation. So, that is the end of my report. Thank you. And from that, we do not have a closed session tonight, and we are adjourned.
Except?
Oh, sorry. We, we are.
The council meeting is adjourned.
The council meeting is adjourned. We will move directly into our-
Oh, cursed.
Jihad meeting.
GAD, GAD.
GAD meeting.
Thank you. Oh, goodness, yes.
We will move directly into our O-GAD, so I will turn over, turn over the gavel to Chair Chupiano, please. The, the council meeting will be adjourned at 9:51.
Thank you, Mayor Juan. And this will, I will be opening the Oakhurst Geological Hazard Abatement District meeting at this time, and I guess we will do a roll call first.
Board Member Juan?
Here.
Board Member Tillman?
Here.
Board Member Diaz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clovin?
Here.
Chair Chupiano?
Here. And really, the only item that we have, oh, consent calendar first, oh, public comments first. Sorry, look at me, first meeting, really. Are there any public comments for the Oakhurst Geological Hazard Abatement District meeting? Any hands raised?
Chair Chupiano, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Thank you, Janet. We will close public comments and move to the consent calendar. And I guess the consent calendar is approving the minutes from the December 6th, 2022 meeting, correct? And then adopting a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Fies. I just want to make sure, Larry, that I'm pronouncing it right again. Fies Engineering and Associates through June 30th, 2024. Now, do I need to read the entire paragraph? No, okay.
You would, at this point, ask if there are any questions or anyone to poke off, and then public comment?
Do we have any questions from the council?
Open up public comment on the consent calendar?
Oh, okay. And then opening public comments for the consent calendar. Do we have any public comments?
Chair Chupiano, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Okay, thank you.
And then you would close public comments, just get in the habit of that.
We're going to close public comments. Thank you. We'll close public comments. And then do we vote on?
I'll second.
And a second? Okay.
Board Member Juan?
Aye.
Board Member Tillman?
Aye.
Board Member Diaz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clovin?
Aye.
Chair Chupiano?
Aye. And I did just want to make one comment before we close this meeting, if that's okay to do that at this time? Is it okay?
This would be essentially, you have no public hearings, no action items, and sort of under board items for future meetings.
Okay. No public hearings, no action items, and so under board items, the, we do plan on having a robust Oakhurst Geological Hazard Abatement District meeting in the near future, and by near future, I mean within a month or two, where we are truly going to identify the scope of work that needs to be done in the GAD district. We're going to identify the costs associated with that scope of work and have a clear timeline of when that work is going to be done, and review the budget constraints, and figure out how to accomplish the work that we outline in the scope. So, more to come on the next meeting, but it will be happening sooner rather than later. Thank you.
She stole what I want to say.
I request the same thing.
Excellent.
All right.
And I guess we are adjourned. Yay! Good night, everyone.